My name is Carleen Thompson, and I want to thank you for joining today's candidate training session for city council. This meeting will be recorded, and we also ask that, just out of respect and considerations for others, that you please mute your phone or your PC, and we will be getting started in just a couple minutes.
Hello. I hope you found that video informative for everyone just on our form of government. Again, it's our issue with technology. I apologize for this. So, the Office of City Council, this is basic information. There are nine city council members, six district seats, which as we talked about, this is what's on the ballot. Three at-large seats, those three members ran last year in 2019 of April, and they run citywide. So, we're just talking about the districts. Again, those district members are running within your confined district, not citywide. City council members receive an annual stipend of $6,250 as established in the city charter. A lot of questions we get on that is, well, why can't that increase? That is in the city charter, and the only way to change that is to pose a question on the city ballot so that that figure is not adjusted for cost of living increases over the years. It is a set figure at this point, absent anything going on the ballot to change that. City council meetings are regular, as in they vote on things. Meetings are on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month at City Hall. Work sessions are always the Monday prior to each regular meeting at City Hall also, which City Hall is a couple blocks north from the City Administration Building. It's 107 North Nevada Avenue. That's where city council offices are, and that's where we have the city council members' meetings, I should say. City council also serves as the governing board of the Colorado Springs Utilities, and they meet the third Wednesday of each month. There are multiple committees that they have in that structure, and they, of course, meet at different times, but their actual monthly meeting is the third Wednesday of each month. There are seven support staff members, as we just talked about where their offices are, so they do have their own staff to support them. There are seven members. This is just a charter section that just talks about the duties of the city council. And now, if we haven't lost President Strand, in the meeting, he is traveling today, so we really appreciate Councilmember Strand talking to everyone about what it really means to be a council member. And President Pro Tem Tom Strand is an at-large council member, meaning he is not on the ballot for the April 6 election. He was re-elected to his at-large council seat in 2019. And so, hopefully, if we have Councilmember Strand still on the phone.
Okay, Sarah, this is Tom. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I hope it's clear enough. I'm in, yeah, I'm in Raton, New Mexico, coming back from spending the New Year's holiday with my grandchildren in Texas. And so, like the mayor said, I want to thank all of you for your involvement with our city and that you care about serving our city and community, and for that, I'm very grateful. On behalf of the president of city council, which is Richard Skorman, and the other seven city council members, I want to welcome you to this experience and this adventure you're about to enter. It's kind of interesting, because just about six years ago, I was where you were, and stepping into something that, you know, maybe you knew more, or maybe you know more now than I did back then, but there were a lot of unknowns. A little bit of my background, I had a 30-year career in the Air Force, and started at Peterson in 1975, at Pete Field, when it really was Pete Field. And then, after that, retired in 2005, came back to Colorado Springs. I'm an Ohio boy, so I'm excited about Ohio State going to the finals. I then got involved with SCORE, which is a group, kind of like the SBDC, that works with the Small Business Administration. So, right after I retired, I started volunteering to work with small businesses. I then got involved with the District 11 School Board Oversight Committee, and then later was elected to the District 11 School Board, where I served from 2007 to 2013. And then, as Sarah just said, I got elected at-large. You know, one of the challenges for the at-large is you have to get twice the number of signatures on your petition. Instead of 50 registered voters, you need 100, which is the same amount that the mayor needs. And then, you really need to spread out, now probably half million people after this latest census. Both of the elections that I ran, I needed to collect about $50,000 to run for city council in 2015, and then again in 2019. In 2015, I ran against 13 other people. The top three were selected to be on city council for an at-large position. And then, last year, there were 11 that ran for those three positions in 2019. One of the things, you know, in terms of timing, how much time, you know, is this going to be? And you talk to any of the city council members, and they may give you a different number. You know, they may tell you they're putting in 30, 40, even 50 hours a week. If you look at the meetings that you really need to attend, which are the ones that Sarah talked about, the two regular work sessions and two regular meetings a month, I kind of figure that's about 20 hours of meeting time for those required meetings. Also, the thing I didn't understand six years ago was the commitment with the Utilities Board. I've served as the vice chair and the chair on the Utilities Board. There's one meeting a month, that's about three to four hours, the third Wednesday, but there are six different committees with utilities. And I had to learn an awful lot that I didn't know about issues concerning power generation, about water, about wastewater, and I found that I was putting in almost more time with the Utilities Board than with city council, at least the first few years. We ended up going through a whole reorganization, hired a new CEO for the utilities, and that's the one thing that I didn't realize was such a time commitment. Now, I've kind of mentioned about 24 hours of meetings for the regular meetings, but then there are liaison opportunities and committees that you will be on that will double and triple the number of regular meetings that you will attend. And so, there are different organizations. We've got 57 boards, committees, and commissions, and on many of those, we have city council members who are assigned as a liaison to those committees and commissions. They include the Human Relations Commission, one we just created for law enforcement that we created last summer, and we're meeting again tonight virtually. That group has got 11 commissioners, and they meet twice a month for three to four hours a month at each of those meetings. So, you know, those kinds of activities are really the kind you're going to put in a lot of time in addition to the meetings that are scheduled in regular meetings. There are also groups that I'm involved with, the Audit Committee, the Visit Colorado Springs Organization, which is our tourist group. There are the Housing Building Administration, or Association, Regional Building Department, the City Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development, Trails and Open Spaces Coalition, and it goes on and on. So, you know, can you put in 50 hours a week? I think that's certainly possible. This last year since March, I have been meeting virtually along with at least two other members that are kind of the senior folks. I am the oldest member on city council currently, 72, and we've been very careful since March with COVID. Some of our council members have gone into City Hall and actually been at the dais and in chambers. Some of the rest of us have been more careful, and we've been meeting on Microsoft Teams and Zoom. That has gotten better and more organized and more technically efficient since March. Hopefully, with the vaccine, and I found out, you know, because of my age, I'm now in 1B to get the vaccine. Hopefully, in the next quarter, by the end of March of '21, things will settle down, the numbers of hospitalizations and people that are in ICUs, and unfortunately, the number of people that we lose will start to fall off, and it'll be a much better '21. We're all hoping for that. Let me tell you some of the things. Sarah gave me about 10 minutes, and I've used probably half of that. I want to talk about things that I see coming up in 2021 that you may well be involved with. She did mention we have seven staff members that work with us. Currently, there's one vacancy of those seven. So, we've got the chief, Emily, who's kind of the chief administrator, Michael, who's the deputy, Alex, who's our public affairs and communications guy, Sam, who is our constituent liaison. And for instance, this morning, just coming in from Texas, I've received 50 emails. Many of those are about getting small businesses back open again, and I guess today, the governor has allowed small restaurants to reopen for inside seating to a 25%, but a lot of people are concerned about that. People send me emails about whether they're going to be required to take the virus vaccine shot or not. People contact us all the time about land use issues and concerns they have about zoning and concerns they may have about homeless. So, constituent contacts are another major time or opportunity to reach out to the community, but it does take up time that you need to do. Sam is doing that. Carleen kind of works a lot of our projects. What I'm working on now is puppy mills with Carleen, and then Michelle is just moving from sort of the front desk job to kind of dealing with all the commissions and boards and committees. The things I see, the big issues coming up this year, we're going to take another look at the PLDO. You'll hear a lot of acronyms. If you have any military background, you'll be comfortable with that, but this is the Parks Land Development. This is the Parks Land Development. This is the Parks Land Development. Over the past almost six years, that collaboration has led to unprecedented levels of new job creation in the city and provided a path for the city to overcome a $1 billion public infrastructure deficit. I value my relationship with our current council members and look forward to forging partnerships with new council members in our shared desire to make Colorado Springs the best place to live, work, and play. Thank you again for your interest in public service and for taking the time to attend this training.
Hello. I hope you found that video informative for everyone just on our form of government. Again, it's our issue with technology. I apologize for this. So, the Office of City Council, this is basic information. There are nine city council members, six district seats, which as we talked about, this is what's on the ballot, three at-large seats. Those three members ran, last ran in 2019 of April, and they run citywide. So, we're just talking about the districts. Again, those district members are running within your confined district, not citywide. City council members receive an annual stipend of $6,250 as established in the city charter. A lot of questions we get on that is, well, why can't that increase? That is in the city charter, and the only way to change that is to pose a question on the city ballot so that that figure is not adjusted for cost of living increases over the years. It is a set figure at this point, absent anything going on the ballot to change that. City council meetings are regular, as in they vote on things. Meetings are on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month at City Hall. Work sessions are always the Monday prior to each regular meeting at City Hall also, which City Hall is a couple blocks north from the City Administration Building. It's 107 North Nevada Avenue. That's where city council offices are, and that's where we have the city council members' meetings, I should say. City council also serves as the governing board of the Colorado Springs Utilities, and they meet the third Wednesday of each month. There are multiple committees that they have in that structure, and they, of course, meet at different times, but their actual monthly meeting is the third Wednesday of each month. There are seven support staff members, as we just talked about where their offices, so they do have their own staff to support them. There are seven members. This is just a charter section that just talks about the duties of the city council. And now, if we haven't lost President Strand, in the meeting, he is traveling today, so we really appreciate Councilmember Strand talking to everyone about what it really means to be a council member. And President Pro Tem Tom Strand is an at-large council member, meaning he is not on the ballot for the April 6 election. He was re-elected to his at-large council seat in 2019. And so, hopefully, if we have Councilmember Strand still on the phone.
Okay, Sarah, this is Tom. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. I hope it's clear enough. I'm in, yeah, I'm in Raton, New Mexico, coming back from spending the New Year's holiday with my grandchildren in Texas. And so, like the mayor said, I want to thank all of you for your involvement with our city and that you care about serving our city and community, and for that, I'm very grateful. On behalf of the president of city council, which is Richard Skorman, and the other seven city council members, I want to welcome you to this experience and this adventure you're about to enter. It's kind of interesting, because just about six years ago, I was where you were, and stepping into something that, you know, maybe you knew more, or maybe you know more now than I did back then, but there were a lot of unknowns. A little bit of my background, I had a 30-year career in the Air Force, and started at Peterson in 1975 at Pete Field, when it really was Pete Field. And then, after that, retired in 2005, came back to Colorado Springs. I'm an Ohio boy, so I'm excited about Ohio State going to the finals. I then got involved with SCORE, which is a group, kind of like the SBDC, that works with the Small Business Administration. So, right after I retired, I started volunteering to work with small businesses. I then got involved with the District 11 School Board Oversight Committee, and then later was elected to the District 11 School Board, where I served from 2007 to 2013. And then, as Sarah just said, I got elected at-large. You know, one of the challenges for the at-large is you have to get twice the number of signatures on your petition. Instead of 50 registered voters, you need 100, which is the same amount that the mayor needs. And then, you really need to spread out, now probably a half million people after this latest census. Both of the elections that I ran, I needed to collect about $50,000 to run for city council in 2015, and then again in 2019. In 2015, I ran against 13 other people. The top three were selected to be on city council for an at-large position. And then, last year, there were 11 that ran for those three positions in 2019. One of the things, you know, in terms of timing, how much time, you know, is this going to be? And you talk to any of the city council members, and they may give you a different number. You know, they may tell you they're putting in 30, 40, even 50 hours a week. If you look at the meetings that you really need to attend, which are the ones that Sarah talked about, the two regular work sessions and two regular meetings a month, I kind of figure that's about 20 hours of meeting time for those required meetings. Also, the thing I didn't understand six years ago was the commitment with the Utilities Board. I've served as the vice chair and the chair on the Utilities Board. There's one meeting a month, that's about three to four hours, the third Wednesday, but there are six different committees with utilities. And I had to learn an awful lot that I didn't know about issues concerning power generation, about water, about wastewater, and I found that I was putting in almost more time with the Utilities Board than with city council, at least the first few years. We ended up going through a whole reorganization, hired a new CEO for the utilities, and that's the one thing that I didn't realize was such a time commitment. Now, I've kind of mentioned about 24 hours of meetings for the regular meetings, but then there are liaison opportunities and committees that you will be on that will double and triple the number of regular meetings that you will attend. And so, there are different organizations. We've got 57 boards, committees, and commissions, and on many of those, we have city council members who are assigned as a liaison to those committees and commissions. They include the Human Relations Commission, one we just created for law enforcement that we created last summer, and we're meeting again tonight virtually. That group has got 11 commissioners, and they meet twice a month for three to four hours a month at each of those meetings. So, you know, those kinds of activities are really the kind you're going to put in a lot of time in addition to the meetings that are scheduled in regular meetings. There are also groups that I'm involved with, the Audit Committee, the Visit Colorado Springs Organization, which is our tourist group. There are the Housing Building Administration, or Association, Regional Building Department, the City Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development, Trails and Open Spaces Coalition, and it goes on and on. So, you know, can you put in 50 hours a week? I think that's certainly possible. This last year since March, I have been meeting virtually along with at least two other members that are kind of the senior folks. I am the oldest member on city council currently, 72, and we've been very careful since March with COVID. Some of our council members have gone into City Hall and actually been at the dais and in chambers. Some of the rest of us have been more careful, and we've been meeting on Microsoft Teams and Zoom. That has gotten better and more organized and more technically efficient since March. Hopefully, with the, you know, with the vaccine, and I found out, you know, because of my age, I'm now in 1B to get the vaccine. Hopefully, in the next quarter, by the end of March of '21, things will settle down, the numbers of hospitalizations and people that are in ICUs, and unfortunately, the number of people that we lose will start to fall off, and it'll be a much better '21. We're all hoping for that. Let me tell you some of the things. Sarah gave me about 10 minutes, and I've used probably half of that. I want to talk about things that I see coming up in 2021 that you may well be involved with. She did mention we have seven staff members that work with us. But this is the Parks Land Development. So whenever developers get involved with a big development, they have to set aside part of that development for parks and open spaces. And that is an ordinance. And we're looking at redoing that ordinance to see what percentage of the property needs to be set aside, and we're going to put a lot of time into that in the next three months. The TOPS, Trails and Open Spaces Group. The TOPS, I think expires in 2025. It is a tax. It's part of the sales tax. We're looking at whether we should extend that TOPS sales tax or maybe even increase it so that we can put more into our parks and open spaces. And as people have been involved with COVID and tried to get outside more, we've seen the need for parks and open spaces and trails have exponentially increased. PSST is the tax for our public safety people, and that's police and fire. It's a tax that helps us support police and fire with body cameras, with the vehicles for our fire department. Our fire department has an active group that works with wildfires, which we've had a lot of issues in our local area and within our state in 2020. And so that PSST is another area that we're going to put in a lot of time. Sarah talked about the salary or the stipend for city council. We also get, and I'm guessing now, I think it's $2,000 a year for expenses. It may be up to four. We didn't use a lot of that in 2020 because some of that is for traveling. We go with the chamber to Washington DC. We work with local groups in the state. But for 2020, we didn't do any traveling. But there is an additional amount of money set aside for your expenses and your travel if you have to do that. So one of the things, you know, when I got on six years ago, everyone was talking about putting on the ballot an increase of the stipend so that more people would be attracted to being on city council. If you're not retired, if you don't have some, you know, some other form of support, there's no way that $6,200 is going to pay your expenses and your bills. So we tend to get more senior people. We tend to get retired people. And it would be, I think, a much better opportunity if the stipend or salary for city council could be even half of what the county commissioners make, which is well over $100,000. So if it could be $50,000 a year, we would attract a much broader and wider range of applicants and people that are interested in running for city council. So if you get elected, this is the kind of thing you might be working on going forward in 2021. I do want to say that I may not, since I'm out here in the hinterland, be able to take too many questions today. So I'm going to give you my cell number. And if you have a question for me as a member of city council and a member of the Board of Directors for Utilities, you can call, I'll read this twice, it's 719-433-6270. That's 433-6270. So Sarah, have I used up my time?
You were great. Thank you. That was a lot of really good information, and thank you for giving the contact info to chat with you later if any of these potential candidates have a lot of questions. I'm sure they do.
Super. All righty. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to participate, and I wish you all the best and look forward to meeting you in person very soon.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to get into, right into the meat of what it takes to get your name printed on that ballot so you can be an actual candidate. Filing period, as we stated a little bit earlier, begins right now. So 8:00 AM this morning, candidate packets were available, as I mentioned a little earlier, in our lobby for anyone's to pick up. I just want to point out, a candidate themselves does not have to pick up the packet. You can certainly have someone pick it up for you. That's not a problem. So your time period to file for candidacy or withdraw, if you decide you don't want to run, is starting today, and it goes through 5:00 PM on January 25th. So January 4th to the 25th is the time to file for candidacy. And again, the only thing on the ballot as far as elected officials are those six city council district races. So you can pick those packets up, as I mentioned, in our lobby. You can certainly call and talk to Carleen or myself and get scheduled, and I can meet with you to go over everything in the packet. Or like I said, they're out there in the lobby. You can pick them up anytime from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Now, how do you know if you're eligible to be a council member, a candidate? And so you must be a citizen of the United States. You must be 25 years of age or older on the date of the election. You must have resided in the city of Colorado Springs for one year immediately preceding the election date. So that does not mean you have to live in your actual district you want to run in for that solid year, but you do have to actually live in the district at the time you file. So that's the key thing, is you just have to have lived anywhere in the city for one year immediately preceding the election date. You must be a registered elector or registered voter in the city of Colorado Springs, city limits. You must reside in and maintain residency in that council district that you are running for for the entire four-year term. So two important things in that. One, what you're asking to be, the people to elect you to, is a four-year term. All council members, including the mayor, serve a four-year term. You must reside in the district, as I just stated, when you file. You must be registered to vote in that district. And you have to maintain a residence in that district for the entire four-year term. I know that's repetition, but that's important. You have to live in the district you want to run in when you give me your nomination petitions. You have to live in that district for four solid years while you're the elected representative of that district. To verify what city council district your actual residence resides in, I've got a link right there. You can also go to the city's election website, and there are links to that also, if you can't remember this long address. If you want to find out where you're registered to vote, as in the address that you got your ballot in in November of this, of last year, then you can go to govotecolorado.com or .gov. Either one will get you to the spot. It's the Secretary of State's online voter registration lookup system. So when you tell me on these future documents, we're going to talk about in a second, when you list your residential address, that better be the address you're registered to vote in. I know people move around a lot, and we're a very mobile society, but you must make sure that your address you're going to give me on the documents we'll talk about in a second matches what's on your voter registration, and you better make sure it's in the right district. Because I cannot accept a candidate filing packet for a district race in which you do not reside in. These are really important factors. So please, we just went through redistricting, or the relook, I should say, at the six city council districts, and I adjusted those for population growth. So there were 20 precincts that were changed into different districts. All of that information is on the website. And you're very welcome to look that up. But you must, 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 must make sure that you live in the district you think you are going to run for, because we cannot allow you to run in a district you don't reside in. So the candidate packet that you're going to pick up is going to have these 14 items. It's going to have your basing information, which will be a lot of repetition of what we're talking about today, but it's going to be in your packet. You're going to have a candidate contact information sheet. That's the information I'm going to need to contact you. It is also public information, so be careful what you put on there if you don't want it published. You're going to have the 2021 General Municipal Election Ballot Plan. That is a document that's required to be approved by city council, which was approved in December of last year. And it talks about exactly how we're going to conduct the election. It's a very open process. You're going to have maps of the city council districts so that you'll know what all six of them look like, and then you'll know what the boundaries of your district. Written descriptions are also available of those districts on our website. You're going to have instructions to circulators of petitions. We'll talk about this more as we go through this. You're going to have four of the actual nominating petitions. You're going to have a withdrawal of candidacy form. You're going to have an update of independent candidacy, substantial profit business interest disclosure, and the sign information, and all of the things that we're going to talk about today. The important thing about this slide is the six documents that I have in bold, those are the documents, the vital documents in that packet. The campaign finance part of that, of course, is as you raise and expend money towards your candidacy, you do need to report that. The other documents are considered your filing documents. So candidates for the district council members, as Councilmember Strand mentioned a little bit earlier, you must be nominated by petition containing at least, at least, that's the key word here, at least 50 verified signatures of registered electors who reside in the city and in that same council district that you are choosing to run in. I can't stress enough that all of those 50 verified signatures, that I will talk about verification in a second, must be registered voters in the district you're running in. Meaning they too should know what address they're registered to vote in and what district it belongs in. So things to have handy when you're out there gathering these signatures are the website for the voter registration lookup and the city council district boundary lookup feature, those two addresses that I just gave you on the previous slide. The city council district boundary lookup allows you to put in an address and find out what district the individual resides in. The voter registration document will also tell you the district, but it will most importantly tell you the registered address and name of that particular voter. So it's really important that you give me way more than 50 names when you turn in those nomination petitions, because people do not remember what their registered address is. They don't know if they really do live in the city. There's a lot of pockets throughout the city, which you will see when you look at the district boundary map, that are in those little gray areas that are completely surrounded by the city, but they're not city territory. A great example of that is the Cimarron Hills area is not, in fact, within the city boundary of the city of Colorado Springs. And anyone from that area will not be counted as an eligible signature to meet your 50 to get on the ballot. So it's really important you know your district. It's really important that you give me more than 50 names. This is just a little screenshot, really, of what a nominating petition looks like. Obviously, the packet has the full size of the document. You're going to be putting your candidate name. You're going to be putting your candidate voter registration or residential address. In the section right under that, you're going to be filling in the district number of the district you're going to be running. And then you have the signature sections of that. The individuals signing your petition are saying, I support this candidate. I believe they meet the qualifications. I'm signing my name in support of this candidate. So that is signature, printed signature, printed name, signature, address, zip code. At the bottom of that, this is really vital information, at the bottom of that is the affidavit of the circulator. A circulator is simply the person who's going around and getting those signatures for the candidate. It can be the candidate. It can be a friend of the candidate, a spouse, however you want to do that, that's your choice. But the most important thing is, look at that affidavit of circulator. You're going to fill in the circulator's printed name, and then that circulator is swearing under an oath given before a notary that they saw every individual on that list, on that sheet, sign that document. And then you're going to have it notarized. So it's really important that you don't fill out the notary part until you've got all the signatures you want to get on that petition. This information and some of the other things about circulating petitions are on a sheet of paper in your filing packet, instructions to circulators. So there's more instructions, but those are the basic documents. The nominating petitions are on a heavier bond paper, and they include an embossed seal from the city clerk. It's the city seal, basically. Those nominating petitions cannot be photocopied or duplicated prior to getting the signatures. I will only accept them if they come back to me on my paper weight and with our embossed seal. So if you run out of them, or you want to get more people getting signatures, you must get those nominating petitions from my office with the embossed seal. So I want to make that really clear. Now, we'll go on a little bit more, and I'll talk to you about how you're going to do this in a COVID world. So no registered elector may sign more than one nominating petition for a district city council candidate. As you know, when you approach people, a lot of people don't like to tell you no. Sometimes they're, or they're not sure if they sign something. So it's highly possible that you may have one individual sign your petition packet and a petition packet for another individual running in that same district. And that's okay, but know that I will not count both signatures for each, one for each candidate. The first set of documents that come back to me, if that person has not signed another petition, it will count for that candidate. It will not count for the second candidate when I go through their review. Again, these are reasons why you get more than 50 signatures. Very vital. I need more than 50 signatures. So let's talk a little bit about circulating these particular petitions. So again, as we stated, you can't circulate them until starting today through the 25th. The deadline to get them to me is no later than 5:00 PM on January 25th. Now, let's talk about how you're going to get these nominating petitions signed during a COVID world. Because the requirement is a actual signature on a document, what it means is there's no electronic signatures accepted. There's no way to go online and fill this out, and then you accumulate it and print it out with all of the signatures. It is actual, a person signing that document. So what that means is you can turn in a nominating petition, you know, with all of the lines filled out. There's 50 signature spots per nominating petition. It's printed front and back. You can have as many people as you want sign that nominating petition document, or if you would choose, what you can do is, we're giving you four nominating petitions upfront. You can ask for more, but you're getting four. You can have a few people sign each sheet. You can give me 50 sheets with one signature, which means you'll have to get more from me. You can give me five sheets that have 10 signatures on it and variations of that. Just because when you see the nominating petition that it has 50 lines on it does not mean that you can't turn in a petition to me with less than 50 signatures on each individual document. So how many of those petitions that you want to do, how you want to get your signatures, if you want to have them, one signs on line one and one person signs on line four, and you stagger them that way, that's really up to you. The point being, I have to have enough documents in my possession when you turn them back into me that at least on paper, you have 50 signatures, whether that's 50 sheets, 10 sheets, five sheets, doesn't really matter. You do have to get actual signatures on there. If you need additional nominating petitions, you can reach out to my office. There'll be contact information in your packet and at the end of the slide presentation. So it's really important that everybody understands there is no way around getting an actual signature on the nominating petition or petitions, depending on how you want to get those signatures. I cannot accept nominating petitions unless there is the minimum of 50 looking at it on face value. So the verification process comes after you've turned them into me. But please note, when you turn them into me that first time, But please note, when you turn them into me that first time, I'm going to count, and I better have 50. If you have more, which is what I want you to do, that'll be great. If you only have 50, the odds of those 50 all being correct and being verified are very slim. It can be done. It doesn't happen often. So again, get more than 50 signatures on that. So when they're turned back into me, my staff and I will go through the process of verifying that the name on that petition and the address on that petition matches and that they're in the district for the candidate nominating petition that they signed for. Meaning if it's a candidate for the second district, every name on that of the people that are saying, I support this candidacy, must reside in the second district. So be very careful when you're getting those signatures. Again, verify that they live in the district you want to run in and that they are registered to vote at the address and the name they're putting down on the document. So it behooves you to take your time to get these signatures. If you are going to have other people circulating these nominating petitions for you, that's perfectly acceptable. But please make sure they understand the rules. Make copies of that instructions for circulators petition and make sure they have it. If you have any questions at any point, you know you can reach out to me. Again, my contact information will be at the end of the slides. If you turn at least 50 signatures into me, and I verify them and say, you're short. You only have 30 verified. I need you to get 20 more. You, we will re, re, this is important. We will reissue you blank nominating petitions, and you will then go back out and get more signatures. Again, do not give me the minimum number of what you're short. Give me more than that. This will make your life a lot easier. It will make our life easier. But really, it truly does make your life easier. If you are one of these people that's going to wait until the utter last moment to give me your signatures, we always have that flurry of candidates who bring stuff in on the last day to file, which is January 25th. If you have the minimum 50 at the time you're filing it, we'll verify it. If after that point, you are short signatures, there is what's called a cure period where you would have an ability. If you turned in 50 signatures to me by 5:00 p.m. on the 25th, we verify later you're short. Again, you will have a very short window to cure, meaning go out and get more signatures. Again, no candidate is going to be certified as a valid candidate unless they've met the at least 50 valid signatures of individuals in the district that you choose to run in. The other required filing document is this document. Again, this document is in your packet in a larger format. It's called the affidavit of independent candidacy. This is required by the city charter and city code where you're going to state that I am not running or being coerced into running by the sections that are listed on there by a political party, beholden to a political party, et cetera, et cetera. You're also going to fill in the blanks on that. And you're again going to tell me what district you want to run in. And you're again going to tell me that here's the name that I would like to be printed on the ballot. And I want to make really certain, this is what you'd like to go on the ballot. This is the box in the middle of that document. It's really important. You're going to sign it, but look at the bottom of that document. That's a notary. This document by law must be notarized. So you're not going to sign it unless you're in the presence of a notary who will then notarize that document. So please be really careful. There are two notarization requirements going on here with your candidate filings. The nominating petition must be, must be notarized. That's that affidavit of circulator. And this affidavit of independent candidacy must be notarized. I want to make something really clear. My office does not notarize filing documents. We don't notarize our own documents. So when you bring your information back, you're going to have to have already had it notarized. Please make sure the notary that you choose is in good standing with the Secretary of State's office. They are a valid notary and that their notarization, it doesn't expire prior to them filling this out for you. So be very careful with your notaries. Get them notarized before you come to our office. These things are easy things to kind of trip up the candidate. So remember, nominating petition, affidavit of independent candidacy, two required documents at this point. If you, the slide that I had where I had those bolded of what's in the packet, the bold things are required. Please, please get me your required documents by the end of the filing period. And this is just a little bit of information about the affidavit of independent candidacy. There's the city code requirement for that. And then the other third document that's bolded on that list of what's in your packet is within 10 days of filing your nominating petition and your affidavit of independent candidacy, the candidate must also file disclosure of substantial private business interests. This substantial private business interest form is a requirement under the campaign finance law for our city. So the easiest thing for you to do is to file all three documents at the same time. So file your nominating petitions, your affidavit of independent candidacy, and go ahead and file with me your independent or your disclosure of substantial private business interest forms. Why make multiple trips? File it with me when you file your other documents. All of this is in your candidate packet. Any candidate who has not filed a nomination petition with the required number of signatures verified by me and the affidavit of independent candidacy will not be placed on the ballot for the April 6, 2021 election. You must have filed those two particular documents by the filing deadline. You must, or your name will not be on the ballot. Again, remember, there is a little bit of a cure period if you're short on signatures. So I'm going to repeat again. The three required documents really to file are the nominating petition, the affidavit of independent candidacy. Both of those have notarization requirements on them. And then the substantial private business interest form, obviously by law, isn't due until 10 days after you file the other two. Easiest thing to do though, file all three at the same time. File all three at the same time is my recommendation. We need original documents. I'm not going to accept the electronic scans of documents. I need original documents with original signatures. We can certainly, and you can certainly make copies of those documents before you file them with me, but I need the original documents. They must be in my possession by the end of the filing period. So let's talk a little bit about how you're going to get those back to me. So you have three options. You can schedule an appointment by calling the office and saying, hi, I'm Sarah Johnson. I'd like to come in and file my documents. What time would you be available? We can schedule an appointment to receive those. You can bring those documents in, preferably in an envelope or maybe the folder that you're going to have when you pick up your filing documents. You place those in the city clerk office drop box, which is located in the lobby of the city administration building that we talked about earlier. Or you can mail them to my office. If you choose to mail them to my office, please know that postmarks are not going to be valid. So it has to be in my possession by the deadline to file. And that deadline to file is 5:00 p.m. January 25th. So I'm not going to worry about postmarks. They're not an issue here in my hands or in the drop box by 5:00 p.m. on January 25th. So that's really important information. Now, I did mention a little earlier that in your filing packet will be something called withdrawal from candidacy and nomination. So what that means is if you file early and then you're constantly watching, because on our website, I failed to mention, on our website, as candidates turn in their documents and as we verify the signatures and verify they've given me the documents I need, we will be listing candidates for each of these district offices on the city website. That's where you go to find out who's met all the steps, who's met the requirements, who's on the ballot. So as you're watching that and you decide, you may decide, wait a minute, what have I gotten myself into? I don't know. I don't think I want to run anymore. Or most common, it's people notice who else is running and decide there's too many candidates. I don't want to run against this one. For whatever reason, if you want to change your mind and say, I don't want to run for office, then you can file that affidavit of withdrawal of nomination with my office. And this is the key date. You would have until 5:00 p.m. on January 29th to withdraw from running for office. So 5:00 p.m. on January 29th is the deadline to file your withdrawal from nomination document with me in the office or in the drop box. If you do that, that means your name will not be printed on the ballot. It will be as if you never turned in nomination papers at all. If you don't withdraw by that time, 5:00 p.m. January 29th, then your name's going to remain on the ballot, and you'll be a voting option for the voters. Now, there are instances after that date where due to illness or just someone decides, I don't, my heart's not in it, I don't want to run anymore. It's fine. You can say that I don't want to be a candidate anymore. But if it's after the 29th at 5:00 p.m., your name's going to be on the ballot regardless. You can advertise that you're not really a candidate, but it's still going to be on the ballot. You're still a valid candidate if you have not withdrawn by the 29th. So you want to pay attention to the website. As we list candidates who've met the qualifications and they start filing, we'll list those by district. So it'll be very easy for you to see who else is filing to run. I also want to mention, and I apologize for not mentioning it earlier, we do have, of the six city council districts, there are three current city council district members who are term limited, meaning the city charter says you cannot serve more than four years, two four-year terms back to back. So the fifth district, council member Gabler, the first district, council member Knight, and the sixth district, which was Andy Pico, he was also term limited and could not run again. Council member, or Andy Pico, got elected to a state representative seat, and he is now a state representative. So there are what I call open seats, meaning in districts one and district five, there are no incumbent candidates. Those races will have no incumbent listed on the ballot. The other three districts do have current council members who are eligible to run again. It is their choice whether they do so or not. I don't have any inside scoop on if they're going to or not, but I did want to point that information out. One of the things that you might want to have going forward is who voted in the past two city elections. That would be 2017 and 2019. That information is available. Current registered voter lists are available from the El Paso County Clerk. So if you wanted to know who lives in your district today and their address and their contact information, you can go to the El Paso County Clerk and Recorder, and you can use that website. Our election data from past years, as in who's voted, which includes names, addresses, and the districts as they existed in 2017 and 2019, that's available from our office. That's Carleen Thompson in our office, and we can talk to you about how to get that information. I'm going to skip over this. This is just about how you get that data in the essence of time. So skip over that. Political signs, we do have requirements. The city planning department has requirements on using signs and where you can place temporary signs and city rights away. This is their contact information. That information's also in your candidate filing packet. I'm going to scoot through that because it's not something handled in my office, and I am not an expert on that. So political signs and those kind of things, some of them must have what's called a disclosure. This is the section on that where large signs, advertising, broadcast, radio, television, they must have what's called a disclosure, which means they must have who paid for it listed on it. Campaign finance. Finance law, we do have our own city finance. We do not follow the state's finance laws at all. We have our own, we're a home rule municipality, meaning we can have our own, and we do. And so all of that information and more is listed on the website. But I will go through some basics. The finance cycle for this April election started October 1 and goes through May 6 of 2021. Once a candidate raises or spends $20 or more, they must start filing campaign finance reports. And you can file those reports electronically or using paper forms. Again, links to the electronic system and all of that are on our website. These are the campaign finance filing deadlines. So the filing date, when the report starts, when the report ends, and then the filing date. So one thing to note, we had several candidates who started filing in October. So October, November, and December of 2020 were monthly reports. Starting today, those reports are due every two weeks, as you saw on the filing. And so it's really important as you really start to become a candidate that you start tracking the required information on that. So campaign finance reports are public record. They are filed. There is a link on the city website. You can look at past campaign finance reports for any of the candidates. Or you can look at the ones for the current election for those that started filing prior to today. You can find those. There is a complaint process. If a citizen believes a candidate has not followed the campaign finance law, there is a complaint process. There are penalties if you don't file your campaign finance report or if you have filed a false report. There are definite penalties for that. This slide is just a summary of what those penalties are, but there is definitely more information on our website that we can go through on that. But the most important thing is if you are raising or spending money and that you have raised or spent $20 or more, you must file campaign finance reports. It's okay because a lot of times candidates are like, wow, I didn't know that, and I rented a P.O. box in December, but I didn't realize I was supposed to file. That's all right. Your first campaign finance report is always the hardest to fill out. We're certainly here to help you fill out that, to answer any questions. But basic premise of our law is you're going to now report every two weeks. It's basically the first and the 15th, give or take what days of the week that falls on. And you're going to report everything. And if it's $20 or more, you're going to need to capture the name, the address, and the occupation. If it's a contribution that's less than $20, those are reported in bulk and they're not itemized. You can file electronically. We have an online system where you can enter the information in a spreadsheet and then upload it. Or you can file paper reports. All of that information, again, is on our website for your reading pleasure, or you can just work with us, and we'll tell you. So basically, this is the contact information for me. It's my office phone number. It's my mobile phone number. It's our fax number. Elections@coloradosprings.gov is the address I'd like you to use. There's three people in my office that monitor that, so we'll get your answers as quick as possible. You've got our website, coloradosprings.gov-election, which will work you through everything you need to know also. Most importantly is if you have a question, no matter how minute or small or large or not, no question is a stupid question. Please reach out to me. Please ask us. We are your filing and your election official. If it comes from us, then it will be the official answer. If you get it from somewhere else, it may or may not be right. We don't guarantee that. But we do want to work with all of you. I can't say enough of how excited I am for the election and how excited I am that you guys will want to file. So I look forward to a lot of candidates for this time. And again, there is no question that is a stupid question and no minor question ask away. You've got our contact information. Your main people you're going to be dealing with. Your main people you're going to be dealing with are Carleen Thompson and myself. And so we're here to help you on the weekends at night. You've got my contact information 24/7, and I am definitely here to help you through this process. And like I said, we will become great friends by the time this election is over with.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you, Sarah, for all that information. We are going to go to the chat now to see if we can, see if there's any questions in the chat. All right. So I'm looking in the chat. I am not seeing any new questions. And I know Sarah had covered the questions that were received prior to the training session. But again, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to us. The candidate packets are available in the lobby of the City Administration Building. If you do get to the, if you pick up a candidate packet and you realize when you get home that you picked up the wrong district file, the only thing that is different in each of the district files is the district map. So, you know, and those maps are available online. So there's no need for you to return that packet to pick up a new one. You can use those forms.
Okay, so I just want to reiterate that point. We went ahead proactively because a lot of times candidates will want to have a specific map of their district along with the map of all six districts. So I want to reiterate what Carleen just said. Right now, when you go into our lobby and pick up the candidate filing packet, you will note they are by district. Again, the only difference is if it says District 1, there is just an extra District 1-only map in the packet. The nominating petition, the affidavit of candidacy, the substantial private business interest form, the candidate contact information form, all of that is the same in every packet. The only difference in the ones we have labeled by district is an extra map of your specific district in there. And I know that's a little confusing. And again, it makes a lot more sense if we could have kind of done this in person and kind of helped you understand. But that is the only difference on that. Maps can be ordered from the City Office Services Division. They are in the basement of the City Administration Building, right underneath my offices, actually. So you can get large, large maps. You can get smaller maps. What we've done is printed it on legal-sized paper, so it's not super detailed, but larger maps can be ordered and paid for through the City Administration Building. Yes, everything that we talked about today, including my contact information, the web addresses that we just talked about, all of that is in your packet on that candidate information sheet. That is the sheet that has basically the summary of what the PowerPoint slides are saying. The other thing we'll do is we've obviously recorded the meeting. So the meeting, along with these PowerPoint slides, will be published on our website today. So you can go back. If you want to hear me talk some more, you can go back and listen to those sections, or you can just look at the slides, or by all means, reach out to me and contact me. I'm definitely here to help you. This should not be a hard process for you all. I think the hardest part, given the COVID environment, is really going to be getting those signatures on that nominating petition. Again, we included four pages of the nominating petition. They are front and back on each side. We've included four. If you do want some more, certainly available to give those to you. We'll just need to connect and either connect in person or we can put those in the Dropbox with your name on it in that respect. So the most important thing, really, the first thing you should do as a candidate is if you are not already confirmed that you live in the district you think you do, get out there on the website, on the council district search, and find out what district you live in. Check your voter registration because I'm going to do all of that, too, when you turn that back in. So let's make sure that you get everything right from the beginning and give me way more than 50 signatures. And normally, that will be okay. But we will definitely be in contact. We will try to verify those petitions as quick as we get them so that you know, because the filing period, as you know, is not really that long. It is a month-long process. You've got to get in there and give me that information as quick as you can. So one of the things I just saw is what is the most common reason that signatures are not allowable? Number one is we can't read it. It's not legibly. The voter didn't write it clear enough to where we can tell what it is. The biggest one is they don't live in the city of Colorado Springs, meaning they live in one of those enclave pockets. Just because you have a mailing address that says "City of Colorado Springs" does not mean you live in the city of Colorado Springs. So that's why that council district lookup feature is really important on our city website because you must have lived in that district to sign that nominating petition. So I'm looking at the questions. The candidate filing packets are not available online. They are not. Again, the nominating petition is your main document, and it is not available online because those have the embossed seal in the upper right corner. And those are ones that you must get from my office. A lot of times I get the question of, "Well, why is that?" Because I need to make sure you're using the right document with the right wording to be able to be a candidate. You can't make your own up. So the way I do that is print them myself, and I put the embossed seal so that you know it's a valid document or not. Issues and consideration for, will be on the ballot as far as questions? No, there are a lot of things rumor mill that you hear, quite honestly, might or might not be placed on the ballot by the city council. I don't have any real inside scoop on that. What I highly suggest is that you all kind of watch the January meetings. We have the 11th and the 12th coming up, which will be when they'll start talking about ballot issues. And then the 25th and 26th are the actual meetings that they will positively place something on the ballot. So stay tuned really for that. It's a great question, but I don't have any insight. We will have a list. One of the questions, I'm sure, from the media really is, are we going to have a list of who's signing? Who's involved in this training session? Who's watching it? We will have a list. As soon as we get done with this meeting, I'll get a list from Jay Anderson, and we'll have that available that anyone can ask if they would like to see who all did this. There's a question about a specific neighborhood, and is it in the Colorado Springs? I highly recommend that you reach out to me directly at elections@ColoradoSprings.gov, and I can verify that. But what I will need is an actual address in Morrison Ranch. I'm right off the top of my head not familiar with where that is in the city. What is a registered elector? A registered elector is somebody who is registered to vote, and that address resides within the city of Colorado Springs. Can you have more than four petitions in the packet? You absolutely can, but you do need to reach out to my office and pick up those extra filing documents. Again, you have my contact information. It's also in the packet. We talked about the most common reasons. Signatures are not allowed or disqualified. Is the candidate committee contact form a requirement? Yes, it is because think of it this way. If I don't know how to contact you to tell you if your petition packet, your nominating petitions are valid or invalid, then that really defeats the purpose of filing. So I must have that candidate committee contact sheet. I must have it. I have to have the ability to know how to reach you to let you know, and to send you the formal document saying your petition is sufficient or insufficient. I must have that. The other good use of that document is when we publish who has filed. And for those offices, we do publish that document along with that because the media and voters, et cetera, also want to know how to contact you. There is a language on that form that says, "Don't put anything. You don't want the public to know." Everything you're filing with me is public information, whether I put it on the website or it's a CORO request. It is public information. So I must have that candidate committee contact information. Again, you want to know if you're valid or not valid as far as your signatures. When do we verify signatures? As soon as I get them. Obviously, the City Clerk's office is not a full-time election office. I have city council meetings. We have business licensing. We do try to get those as soon as we can. Usually, typically, you have same-day turnaround. The only difference is on the last day of filing, if I get it undated with petitions, we may not have a chance to get them in the same day. But our goal is to let you know as soon as possible when we can get these verified, whether they're valid or not. So let's see. All the contact information and the web addresses are in the packet. Again, those are in the packet. They are on that sheet that's called your candidate information sheet on there. So let us know if there's any other questions. Feel free to type those in. The most important things you need to know are come get your packet. It's available. I am also available to connect with you if you want to meet in person to kind of go over some of the things we talked about today. I am reachable 24/7 because I know this time period is short for you to file. You do have to get at least 50 signatures. COVID-19 restrictions do make that harder. We are understanding of that. But the code says this is the time period for the filing. There are no extensions because of COVID at this point. Again, if you want extra nominating petitions, that's fine. You'll need to let us know to contact you or contact us and let us know. Again, you have to have 50 valid signatures. Again, it can be on those four petition blanks we give you. It can be on one. It can be a multitude. You do not have to fill out all 50 spots on a nominating petition. You can have multiple people. Multiple people can circulate for you. That's not an issue. The candidate does not have to do everything by themselves. One other thing I want to say on campaign finance I neglected to is that I get a lot of questions about, "Well, should I have a campaign manager? Should I have a campaign treasurer?" Campaign manager is up to you. I don't delve into that world much. There are people that get paid to do that. There are people that volunteer. That's certainly your choice. The one thing I highly recommend, and I cannot stress enough, is that you have a campaign treasurer. You are not required to have a treasurer. But let me tell you what, with filing every two weeks and receiving or expending $20 or more, you are going to need somebody you trust to keep track of the money because you are going to have to report that. So my big recommendation is get a campaign treasurer. You don't have to, though. It's up to your choice. Campaign manager, your choice. If you'd like to have one, there are plenty of them out there. If you don't, that's fine, too.
Okay, well, thank you, Sarah. I think that is all the questions that we received today. So I don't see anything else than the question and answers. But like we said, and Sarah said, please feel free to contact our office with any questions. And with that, we will conclude today's meeting. Thank you.